Gun Sports Radio is sponsored by Love Radio Network. Welcome to Gun Sports Radio, all about shooting, hunting, self-defense and more. Now here are the hosts of Gun Sports Radio, Dave Stahl and Lance Pelkey.
All right, folks, hey, welcome. This is Gun Sports Radio. Lance is not in today. But we want to thank them, him anyway, for all the hard work. He did all the paperwork. This segment is brought to you by Gun Range San Diego, 7853 Ballbo Avenue in San Diego. 10 to 10, seven days a week. Go to thegunrangeSanDiego.com, thegunrangeSanDiego.com. Hey, and don't forget Trident Gunsmithing, if you need to get anything worked on, shotgun, pistol, any type of weapon, Trident Gunsmithing has got a great, a great gunsmith by Dan. Dan does a phenomenal job. So check him out, tridentgunsmithing.com, especially if you're in the hunting field. They know everything there is to know. They have classes, training, how to teach how to cook your game. They do it all. TridentGunsmithing.com, check them out. All right, we've got Mr. Schwartz in the house. It's just me, him and his lovely wife.
That's it.
And what kind of a brat did she bring me?
That is a newskies brat.
How do you spell newski?
N-E-W-S-K-I-N.
N-U-E-S-K-E, I think. Well, I'll tell you what, it smells so good. I'm going to let you talk to our special guest, Jim Miller, El Cajon Valley Union School District. Hey, Jim, too bad you're not here. You could have a bite.
And I take that, too.
Jim, how you doing?
Doing very well. Thanks for having me on again.
You bet. Thanks for coming on the show. Jim is on the Cajon Valley School Board. And I was talking with you, Jim, recently about a conference that was, that I wanted you to expand on and tell folks exactly, a little bit about what happened at this conference. It was a conference for school board members in California? Or what exactly was the purpose of the conference?
So the California Association of School Boards puts on their educational seminar summit once a year, and it rotates between San Diego and San Francisco. This year it was in San Francisco. And it's basically three days, all the school districts within California are represented, their boards or superintendents, sometimes additional members of the, of the staff. And there's breakout sessions on dozens of various topics from the Brown Act, open meetings laws, to this year, a hot topic was school safety and active shooter things, et cetera, et cetera. So being who I am, Mike, as you know, and being involved with San Diego County Gun Owners and growing up shooting my whole life, and what we've done at the Cajon Valley School Board, I figured I would venture over to two of the breakout sessions associated with school safety and inactive shooter situations.
And you're, I mean, and you're, so you're on the school board, but you're, you know, a bit of an expert when it comes to school safety, especially with, you know, what you talked a little bit about with what you guys have done in, in the Cajon School District. Can you talk a little bit about, just, just touch on a couple of things that you guys have done to make your school safer?
Absolutely. So one of the, one of the things that we did was all of our campuses, and we have almost 18,000 kids, we have 27 school sites, all of our sites are closed campus, all of them have fencing. So unlike some of the shootings you, you hear about in the news where random person A walked onto a school campus because there's no fencing.
Unopposed, unchecked, yeah.
We don't have that. So we also have the, the Raptor check-in system. So when you check in, your identification is run through a computer program that pops up on the receptionist's computer as to whether or not you're flagged for any particular reason. We also took effort a year ago to move the two remaining office entrances from the middle of campuses and move them to the front of campuses. So now every checkpoint has a manual area that somebody has to walk through to do their check-in and to, and to be seen. So we've done a number of things. We also included and just brought on DMB to do consulting about safety protocols and procedures. We hired Ryan Love to act as our Director of Safety and Security to be a one-person contact with all of our law enforcement and to coordinate with law enforcement because our schools work with both sheriffs as well as City of El Cajon PD because we have so, so many sites and we're spread out in the county and City of El Cajon.
And so these are just a couple of things, a few of the things that you guys have done. You've done a ton to make sure that your schools are safe and secure, and that's without, you know, stepping on or calling for, you know, the, the ban of people's Second Amendment rights. You guys have done a fantastic job. I think you guys are a model that, that the rest of the county and possibly the rest, rest of the state should follow. Now, what was your opinion? What was the talk in these breakout sessions when, when in the, at the conference? What was the general tone or what was the information given?
See, and, and that was my background, right? I wanted to see where we were. We kind of had an idea as far as the Cajon Valley School Board. Where were we though compared to, what is the current state concept? What is, what's the brain trust, so to speak, trying to come up with at the state level and, and the school boards level? And about 10 minutes into the very first session, one of the panelists made the following statement. And the statement was, "We're here to keep kids safe and protect them, not to fight." So that, to me, with my background, with what we've done, is an immediate red flag. Because the basic premise of high, of run, hide, fight, you're missing one-third of the entire equation right there. If you don't understand as a school board, as a school district, as a school administrator, that to keep kids safe, the element of having to fight at some point comes into play, you've already lost that particular issue. And that was just absolutely not surprising, but unfortunately shocking to me to hear him say that. And to have the rest of the board, you know, the panel, that is, doing the presentation, kind of mimic that line all the way through. And they had basically a decent outline as to what your school district should do to harden campuses, to bring in consultants and experts and to work with law enforcement. It's just kind of, they're going, you know, you guys probably stop the panel now. Just give us a call at Cajon Valley and we'll give you the outline because we've already done all of this. But then there was a lady that was leading the panel that started this, their, their commission. They, they put a commission together. How somebody from my board wasn't on that commission, there's also a red flag to me based upon what we've done. And frankly, other districts know that we're ahead of the curve on this.
Yep.
But she said, "And we now plan to lobby, we have a plan to lobby in, in Washington, DC and Sacramento." Now, to the credit of a couple of the panelists, they, they all cringed a little bit. And then I had a conversation with them afterwards that, you know, the leader of their little commission, she is an anti-gun. The whole plan was definitely anti-gun, guns are bad. But it wasn't, wasn't completely overt until she got to that point.
Until she got to that. So did she talk about exactly what she wanted to lobby? Or did she give examples of some of the things that they do support? Or how did that go?
Um, if you remember the Gong Show where they hit the gong and you have to immediately stop your, stop your plan, the two panelists that didn't want her to go there immediately interrupted. But it was clear that that was her next, next line of, of thought. Now, that was just one seminar. I went to another seminar that, that was the entire line of thought. I still cannot get through that they don't want to talk about real facts, real statistics. They show videos that are, are put together by every town of these kids talking about how they're scared to go to school, but they don't talk about how schools are safer today than they were in the 90s. There's fewer shootings on school campuses per capita than in the 90s.
I, I think that's the worst. When they, when they do the whole, well, we're going to scare the mess out of kids.
Right, that's the idea.
And then we're going to put them on video and talk about how scared they are. And then we're going to advance our political agenda is the absolute worst.
Hey, Jim, let, let me jump in for a second because
Go for it.
You know, a lot of times when you hear, you know, schools hardening their schools, "Oh, we can't afford it. We can't afford it." What, what kind of an investment did you make in your school?
Well, keep in mind that, one, when we moved the, the offices to the front of the school, that was a pretty significant cost. Because you need to control the ingress and egress of the school. You, you really can't do that if you don't have personnel where somebody has to walk through, walk through and, and see somebody live. So that, that was a pretty decent cost to our district, but it was a common sense cost.
Right.
Now, what we've done is between DMB, who's doing the consulting on practices and procedures, we also had ACOM, which is a nationwide company, come in and do the walk as to, okay, what are the physical impediments? What do we need to do? So do we have fences that are too high and they run up to the, to the roof so somebody could climb the fence and jump right onto the roof? Okay, we've now found that. So those are things that we have to fix. And we, and we come up and we said, "Hey, we have locked gates, but if people don't have the common sense and the practices," say, "Hey, there's a first grader running along, say, 'Hey, excuse me, little boy, could you please open the gate for me?" And the boy runs over and opens the gate.
Right.
That's a failure to educate your, not just your staff, but also your student population. Hey, we're not letting just random people into the gate, folks. So that's why it was really important to have the dual-pronged, we hired the consultants for practices and procedures as well as ACOM as to the hardening of the, of the facilities from special door locks, latches. We ran a, we did, we just had a presentation on this from our director. They ran a lockdown drill. And again, some of the teachers are unsure as to locking the doors to whether the door locks right. So they lock the door, but then they open the door and try to pull it from the outside. Reach your arm out and pull it from the outside. Like, no, no, you're not supposed to do that. Once you lock it down, you close it and get inside.
Well, Jim, and this is why it's important, I hate to cut you off, but we, we got to go to a commercial break, but this is why it's important to focus locally like San Diego County Gun Owners does.
Yes.
The fight is, is been brought down to the, the school board level, and we appreciate you fighting the good fight, Jim. Thank you so much for doing what you do.
And we'll definitely get you back on because I'm sure we'd like to hear more about your, your processes and procedures. And everybody else needs to, like you said, become alert and listen to your school district. You can make a big difference.
No, thank you very much, guys.
All right, you have a great afternoon, folks. We're going to take a small break. This is Gun Sports Radio, FM 96.1 AM, 1170. I'm Dave, he's Michael. We'll be back in a moment.
One lucky VIP club member could win their mortgage or rent paid for, for an entire year.
It's a Christmas Mortgage Miracle Sweepstakes.
Enter to win by visiting theanswerSanDiego.com or tap the Answer San Diego app to check out and participate in today's contests, polls and surveys. It's the Christmas Mortgage Miracle and it's here to make your life just a little bit easier. If you've been looking to add a couple extra Benjamins to your pocketbook, look at joining the VIP club at theanswerSanDiego.com. Then enter the Christmas Mortgage Miracle and a chance to have your mortgage or rent paid for, for an entire year.
The Christmas Mortgage Miracle Sweepstakes.
Sponsored by San Diego's real estate authority, John Reeves with Reef Point Real Estate. It's critical you work with an agent you can trust and who has a track record of guaranteeing your success every time in writing. Learn more at JRHasTheBuyers.com. That's JRHasTheBuyers.com. And don't forget to enter the Christmas Mortgage Miracle Sweepstakes at theanswerSanDiego.com.
Can you guys believe it? It's December and we're getting closer and closer to a new year. Andrew K. here. And if you're anything like me, you know it's better to give than to receive. Well, Charlie and the team at Liberty Tobacco, they feel the same way. That's why they have some incredible savings happening at both stores throughout the month of December that will allow you to give more to that special someone. I was just in the Del Mar store picking up a few sticks for a friend here at the station, and the humidor was full of some of the best cigars in the world from Davidoff, Opus X, Empedron, just to name a few. Good thing I was able to get some recommendations that made it even easier to give the perfect gift. Now remember, Liberty Tobacco has been around since 1975 and they have two convenient locations. They're at 7341 Claremont Mesa Boulevard, next to Ethan Allen Furniture, and in the Flowerhill Mall, right off the five at Viadale Vieille in Del Mar. So stop by and pick up a couple of sticks for everyone on your nice list. Or you can visit them online at libertytobacco.com.
FM 96.1, AM 1170, The Answer.
I love car problems. Cars don't care. All right, folks, hey, welcome back. This is FM 96.1 AM 1170. We are the answer. I'm Dave, he is Michael, and you're listening to the Gun Sports Radio Show. Hey, how can you make your AR rifle legal and keep your features? Well, if you want your AR to have a pistol grip, telescoping stock, telescoping, telescope, yeah, that's one of those stock, foregrip and still have a detachable magazine, check out CaliKey. Whether you are buying a new AR or need to make your current AR compliant, CaliKey is cost-effective and easy solution that will allow you to keep your AR compliant and future-proof your AR from all these terrible California gun laws. Keep your entire AR collection intact. Go to calikee.com, K-A-L-I-K-E-I-K-E-Y.com, K-A-L-I-K-E-Y.com.
I'm going to post video of my CaliKey here the next week.
Good.
Yeah, just got it all ready to go.
Figured it out.
Get it all installed and I'll, I'll put it up on San Diego County Gun Owners Facebook page.
Wife do it for you?
She did it, yeah. I lose all the screws.
Screams, screws go, I mean, the springs go everywhere with you.
It's embarrassing.
Hey, do you or any of your family keep a taser, people, pepper spray, firearm or other weapons for personal protection? Do you or are you going to get a CCW? Well, what happens if you get pulled over by law enforcement and they take you off to jail? What are you going to do? Well, for $10 a month, it's solved. They'll give you a 24-hour hotline, legal representation, help you get out of jail. It's the best firearms legal protection. Go to firearmslegal.com, firearmslegal.com. We're calling it 469-310-9100. All right, we got Dylan? No, we don't have Dylan on the line.
He's not on, no.
Okay, well then let's ask this lovely lady sitting here who just got her CCW, correct?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Well, about a year ago.
About a year ago. And did it make you a different person?
Well, yes.
More, more comfortable, more protected? And I only ask you this because, you know, everybody says, "Oh yeah, I got a CCW." Okay, well, did it make any difference to you? Did it, did it change your life? Do you go about going through town differently? Do you have that confidence more so than without it? Or no?
Well, it's about exercising my right to be able to have the gun. So I wouldn't say that I every day carry it. I don't carry it to work. I work for a bank. And so I'm cautious about that. But the ability to take it if I want to has been a big change. In fact, at one point, I don't even remember where we were going, but I said something to Michael about, you know, taking the gun somewhere. And I said, "Okay, well, do I need to lock it up in the back of the car and whatever?" And he's just like, "Well, actually, no, you have a CCW, so you don't need to do that," which was kind of interesting because I feel like every day, every time we go out with the guns, there's all these procedures we have to follow and lock it up with the, the chain around the lock and whatever. And, and actually, that was kind of interesting.
It's like walking on eggshells.
Yes, 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 yes. I couldn't, I, I never know what's okay and not okay. But with the CCW, I'm actually able to take it with me if I really wanted to. And that was a big difference.
Wow. Well, you know, because it's, and we're starting to see really, and thanks to San Diego County Gun Owners, an uptick of CCWs being processed and assigned.
Yeah, about 1,000 in the last 15 months. I'll tell you, the one thing I've, I've noticed is that Laura, you know, all the training and the practice and going to the range, it, it suddenly became real, you know? It was, it was fun before and it was something we did. But I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Laura, but I think that like the front site trips and the trips to the range, all of a sudden it started to get real meaningful. You know, like, hey, this is an actual skill I need, that I may need tomorrow. And, and so the training got a little, got a little, little, I don't even know how to describe it, maybe just a little more real.
Well, it went from theoretical to practical.
Yeah.
Where it's, okay, I'm training and this is what I do if I could. And then it turned into I would in certain circumstances. And so it kind of changed my perspective actually on carrying the weapon. I think that's one of the things that I really appreciate about front side, about the class that I took with Bill DC when I got my CCW, which is the responsibility of carrying the gun. There's a big responsibility and I sometimes wonder if people realize that when people are given the responsibility to carry the gun, that they really do take on that.
Responsibility of carrying a gun, really.
Right. I mean, the
See, criminals don't.
Right.
Criminals could care less. Criminals carry guns to shoot people. You know, that's to rob people or hurt people. Gun carrying people that are legit and got CCWs, they're doing it for their own personal rights, not that they're going to go out and shoot anybody. I mean, Michael, you do stats on a regular basis. I mean, the number of people that kill other people that are CCW or, or law abiding is minimal.
Yeah, CCW holders commit far less crime than even police officers, let alone the general public. But you know, one thing, Dave, you know, I, I'm a gentleman, you're a gentleman, you know, we behave ourselves. But one thing I've, I've really learned from, from Laura is women live in a whole different world.
World, yeah.
I mean, we're, we're in the same, you know, county.
But we don't think the way they think.
Well, but they don't have to put up with what they put up with. Like, some of the stories that Laura's told me about the way that strangers behave towards her, unreal. You know, first off, I would never think to behave that way.
No, no, no.
And no one's ever behaved that way towards me because I'm a guy.
Right.
Um, so the, I, I just, the freedom and the ability, the freedom that comes along with the ability to truthfully, you know, effectively defend yourself when you're outside of the home, that's a whole different story for women.
Wasn't there just a story, I hate to say Facebook, but unfortunately it was on Facebook, where a woman was accosted with a guy with road rage.
Yeah.
And he attacked her.
Yeah, she was on a motorcycle.
Yeah, that's right. She was on a motorcycle. He ran her down, got her and tried to beat up. She put him out. She took him out.
He was choking her to death. She was terrified. And he was on top of her, choking her to death. And she finally pulled her, her firearm that she was concealing legally with her CCW and stopped the attack. And she's alive because of it.
And she didn't leave the scene. She stayed there waiting for the police.
Right.
And I think there, there's no charges going to be.
No, she, she's good to go. The, so the, the juice in that story was that the anti-gun folks were holding that up as like a, as a, as a sad story about gun violence. They were basically saying, "Hey, look, this is why we have to stop gun violence." Even though this was a situation where a young lady was defending herself from being killed. And they were saying, "Ah, gee, look at that. We have to, we have to stop this tragic gun violence." Well, no, we have to, we have to save women's lives is what we have to do.
Yeah.
And that's exactly what was going on.
I guarantee you, if men knew that women carried, you wouldn't see this road rage. Well, you wouldn't see any road rage. I don't care if it's a man or a woman. If everybody knew that they were carrying, you wouldn't see this stupidity.
Right. And one of the things to, to, you know, be aware, and they're, you know, they're taking those rights away, you know, as quickly as we can, you know, fight back. You know, they're taking away in California, the right for adults that are 18, 19, 20 years old to, to own a firearm, to buy a firearm. And, you know, this is all the stuff that we need to fight back against. And, you know, there's no, there's no safe space for gun owners anymore. You know, so many of them are moving to Texas or moving to Arizona. I can't wait to go to whatever.
Well, let me ask, let me ask you this. Cause, cause to me, I'm rather simple. You know, I'm not a scholar by any stretch of the imagination, but I never hear anybody in the media say to people that are anti-gun, "What are you going to do about taking guns away from criminals?"
Yeah, you know what's funny?
What is the answer? Have you ever asked them that question?
No, but we put up a post on Orange County Gun Owners on Facebook, talking about Facebook again.
Right.
And we put up, and it was just that quote, you know, I, right along those same lines. Hey, I hear, you know, people talking about taking guns away from law abiding. What about taking guns away from criminals? That absolutely went viral. Three million people viewed it, 50,000 people shared it. It's, it's definitely a sentiment that is echoed by a huge population of people in Southern California because it makes sense. You're absolutely right.
The only one that's not reacting to it are the politicians.
Right.
Cause there's no answer.
Right. Well, that's, because that's not the agenda. Again, it's not, it's not safety. It's not, you know, saving lives.
It's controlling somebody else's life and taking away rights that you don't have the right to do.
That's all it is.
Oh my gosh, this makes, well, it really truly makes me crazy. And, and I think, wasn't that post on like a billboard or something like?
Yeah, it was on, it was like a sign that someone was carrying or.
And I seen it and I said, "Well, finally."
I thought it was you.
Yeah, I wish it was.
I thought, I was like, that's got to be Dave's sign.
I wish it was. Cause the thing that gets me, even when you see, you know, watch any media, and by the way, I'm six weeks into non-political. Thank you very much. I've gave up pretty much. I don't know how you go through life, but, but you never hear, I don't care if it's Hannity, I don't care who it is, they never ask that question.
Yeah.
And I don't know how to get to them to ask that question.
Well, one thing I'm going to emphasize, and we're actually going to have an article coming out soon, there is no longer, there are no safe spaces in the U.S. for gun owners anymore. If you're moving to Texas, they just voted for a bunch of anti-gun politicians. Nevada, Arizona, Florida, all these states that people say, "I'm going back so I can own my guns," whatever, blah, blah, blah. Nope, they're all, they're, it's, it's, you gotta stay here and fight. You gotta stay here and fight. There are no more safe spaces.
All right, let's take a quick break right here on FM 96.1 AM, 1170. We are the answer. All right, folks, hey, welcome back. You're listening to FM 96.1 AM, 1170, The Answer. It's the only gun show I know of in Southern California, maybe even California in general.
It's the only one worth listening to, that's for sure.
Well, there's that. I like the way you think. Hey, folks, don't forget Trident Gunsmithing. If you have a shotgun or you like to go hunting or a pistol or, or believe it or not, black powder, Dan loves doing black powder. And he's got a collection down there. You gotta go, if nothing else, just go check out the collection. TridentGunsmithing.com, go to TridentGunsmithing.com, get the address, go down there and check these guys out. Hey, how can you make your AR rifle legal and keep your features? If you want your AR to have a pistol grip, telescoping stock, foregrip and still have a detachable magazine, check out CaliKey. Whether you're buying a new AR or need to make your current AR compliant, CaliKey is a cost-effective, easy solution that will allow you to keep your AR compliant and future-proof your AR from all those horrible California laws. Go to www.calikey.com, that's K-A-L-I-K-E-Y.com. All right, right now, we've got our good buddy Casey from the Gun Range San Diego, 7853 Ballbo Avenue, open seven days a week, 10 to 10. They only close one or two days out of the year. They have special events that you can bring your office staff in, do a little morale building. You can do groups and get all the ladies together, go shooting, get all the guys together, go shooting. All you got to do is go to thegunrangeSanDiego.com, make an appointment, need to get some training. Maybe you're a first-time shooter and you've never shot before in your life and you're a little intimidated. Cause you know, you go down there to those gun stores, those big old burly dudes in there with all the tattoos and ex-marines and they're doing push-ups and things and they don't want to talk to you because you've never picked up a pistol.
Those guys scare me.
That's right, me too. But the Gun Range San Diego is not like that at all. They adjust to every single customer. If you're a first-timer, they love you. If you've been shooting a while, but you got a few bad habits, they'll fix it. And if you're a long-time shooter and you still have bad habits, they'll fix that, too. They've got training to help you get your CCW. It's an awesome one-stop shop. You need clothing, you need gear, you need support, need ammo. I think, Casey, do they still have the 1,000 rounds of nine millimeter for 200 bucks?
Yes, we do.
I was talking to another gun store the other day. "Hey, I'm going to go down there and buy some of that ammo and I'm going to sell it, but I'm going to sell it for more." I says, "Well, I don't know why you're going to do that because they're all going to go back to Gun Range San Diego and get the, get a screaming deal on it." So what are you up to? What do you got left?
I'm just, just, just living the dream over here. It's been a, been a pretty good time. And we had the grand old time a few weeks back. Yeah, I didn't make it on last week. I had like a frog in my throat or something, but I'm back and I'm here.
So Christmas is right around the corner. Now, you're going to be closed Christmas Day, right?
Yes.
Okay. So you doing anything up to Christmas? Anything special? Doing any discounts?
Nothing really special. We're probably going to have, you know, a couple of little flash sales here and there that we'll post on our social media. But coming around the New Year's when we're going to start getting some new inventory in, it's kind of, it's kind of hard to do stuff right now with how shipping is now. It's always getting backed up and delayed, but we're still keeping our heads up. We're still just pushing on. But sales have been, sales have been pretty constant as of late, so that's, that's pretty good.
Yeah, excellent. Well, you know, I don't, you know, Mike, we don't have any scary laws coming up that people have to run out and buy something today, do they?
Well, the ammo thing's coming up, the ammo registration thing's coming up, but that's in July. A lot of people think that that's January 1st. And originally it was passed for January 1st, but it got pushed off to July 1st because the state of California has no clue what they're doing. So.
What? They don't want to pass a law? They don't know what it is?
I know. It's ridiculous. Casey, are you guys, are you getting a lot of people?
January 1st, we got the, we got the age is going to go up for rifles and shotguns.
Yeah, well, that's a big one. Yeah. We were just talking a little bit about that.
Right. So if you want to get a shotgun or a rifle for your, your daughter or son, you'd be able to go down to Gun Range San Diego today and get it.
Absolutely. Yeah. And it's going to change the ammo. So you've got to be 21 to get all that. So it's going to affect us, but we basically had to go through our inventory for people that were buying rifles and shotguns and still doing like the dross process. And if they're under 18, they need to come in and do it because there's no grace period on it. If their dross paperwork isn't done before January 1st, they're, even if they did purchase a firearm, they cannot dross it.
So if you came in on the 31st, bought a gun, you're done?
Yep.
Yeah.
So what's the last day then?
The 10 days over.
You know, if you're 18, 19 or 20, what's the last day this year you can go in and start your dross? That would be what, the 19th or 20th?
20, so technically it'd be the 20th because of the day after. But yeah, the 20th will be the last time. And that's if all the paperwork gets done and you pass your dross and then you have to pick it up that time on New Year's or right before New Year's. So yeah, that was a big issue that we before New Year's. So yeah, that was a big issue that we went through, called up all of our, uh, all of our customers and just let them know, hey, you gotta come in here if you want this gun.
Wow. So I wouldn't even wait till the 20th. If you wait till the 20th and then you're relying on whether it be the internet or the mail or the government processing.
Exactly.
No, 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 no. If you, if you're thinking about buying a gun before the end of the year, today's the day to do it. For sure. Today or tomorrow.
As quick as you can in, just so you have a little grace period, a few days. If anything does happen, you'll still be okay. But if you come down the last wire, it's.
Yeah. You're just asking for trouble.
That's how it is. Yeah, that's, that's one of the issues that we encountered. And so we didn't, it took a second to think about. We're like, you know, we have a couple of people out there like 19 years old, buying a rifle, shotgun, and their paperwork isn't done, cause they're still waiting to pay it off. Hey, we gave them a call and we're like, hey, man, you gotta come in here and get this.
Wait a minute.
That's the last thing we wanna do is, you know, sell the gun to them and hey, you have to wait, uh, two more years till you get it.
Yeah. Hey, wait a minute. Wait a minute. Are you like Walmart? You have layaway?
We do do layaway here.
No. I thought J.C. Penney's and Walmart were the only ones that did layaway and Sears.
Uh, here at The Gun Range San Diego, we do like our layaway, cause we understand how it is, especially with some big ticket items. You know, we, we require at least 30, 30% down around there. We'll, depending on what the firearm is and whatnot.
Oh, yeah.
And then as long as you're coming in regularly and making payments, we're good with that. And we're not gonna hold the gun for you for a year and whatnot, but.
Yeah.
We will work with you as best we can. And now as long as you're making payments regularly, we're good with that.
I would, I would imagine.
You don't make a payment.
Yeah, it doesn't happen.
I would imagine in San Diego, you guys probably have a fair amount of, uh, 18, 19, 20-year-old adults who buy firearms because they're, they're in town, serving in the Navy, serving in the Marine Corps. Is that, is that fairly accurate?
Absolutely. Now, it's a little bit harder for them since they are on base. You have different laws on there where you can keep firearms, cause outside firearms are usually prohibited unless you are living in base housing, you have your own safe, but most of the time they're supposed to check into the armory. So it's kinda harder for guys that are like younger Marines that are in the barracks, trying to keep a weapon there, cause that is a big no-no.
That's a good point. Would you find the majority of your, that the age group be our military or do you get a lot of civilian?
Um, I would say it's, it's about half. I would say we get a lot of, uh, especially the area where we're right next to Miramar, then we have North Island down there. So we're pretty much a smack of military town, especially with San Diego. So it's either, I would say 50%, like most of the time it's, they're normal civilians or we'll get influx of military guys in. So, and each of them's gonna be different for what paperwork's required, because if you're active duty military, you're exempt from having to do the FSC, but you are required to have a copy of your orders. And that's the secondary, that's the, uh, cause a lot of the people are gonna not have their California license out here. You know, they're still gonna have their.
Sure.
IDs from their, from their home state. And so they have certain requirements for that. They gotta have their ID, their DOD CAT card, and then their orders along with a secondary proof of residency. So it's a little bit more technical military, but they do avoid having to take the FSC. And so that, that makes up for it.
Right. Exactly. Wow.
So you were, uh, Casey, were you, correct me, did you serve in the military?
I was. I was in the Marines.
Excellent. Thank you for your service. Now, when you were 18, 19, 20-year-old Marine, uh, you know, uh, they were, they were giving, they were training, uh, you know, these young adults to, to use firearms, right?
Absolutely.
And do you feel like they were all responsible enough to use firearms?
For the most part, yes. There are some special cases out there where it's like, you know what? I really, I see how you shoot and I see you act and I just don't trust you. And so we'll usually put them away from the firearms. You'll be stuck in the company office doing paperwork. So.
But still, the federal government believes.
Yeah. And some people actually be prohibited from using firearms. So if they're like, uh, if they're have, if they have depression or if they're suicide risk or anything like that, they are prohibited from any firearms and they don't get anything.
Wow.
Yeah. There's a lot of stuff that went into it. Yeah. I mean, I was infantry. It's what we did. We're, you know, masters of our trade when it comes to all weapon systems. So you got very, very proficient in it, but at the end of the day, you just came out, whichever one's the best of the best is, that's the weapon they'll get, you know? Uh, if you're very proficient in having the saw, which are, was our light belt fed machine gun, you know, that was your weapon system, cause you were the most proficient on it.
Right.
You know, it was a bad habit of them giving the saw to the young guys in the boots, but you know, that was a very, very, I love that weapon system. And so we started giving out to the senior guys that know how to use it correctly. But yeah.
I must not have been a very good shot. They gave me a tow truck. I had a tow truck. Wait a minute. What's up with that? I'm gonna, I have to look at my records. Cause I think I did pretty good at the range, but yeah, no, it's, yeah, it's, it's, it's interesting though, uh, what, what we have to deal with and, and, and what we're having to put up with. But again.
Yeah.
Thank goodness for, uh, Gun Range San Diego and all the, the hard work you guys do, cause you don't just sell guns. I mean, you educate.
Nope.
Man.
Absolutely. That's, that's one of the first things that we like doing here. And that's one of the biggest compliments that we have a lot of customers saying, is that we keep those range officers in there and we're helping people the entire time. It's not, we're just sitting in a back room watching it's green, being like, oh, lane number four, they're probably gonna get slide bite on their thumb, cause they're holding it wrong. Eh, let them deal with it. No, absolutely not.
Yeah, that'll teach them.
Don't want people all hurt here. Yeah, we're going in there and it, it being a rental range, most of our shooters are all brand new and have never experienced it before. So they do have a little bit of uneasiness in the beginning, but them being new shooters, they always absorb what we're trying to teach them. You know, it's always the people that have been shooting for a long time and have a bunch of bad habits and they don't wanna break it, because let's be honest, we're all stubborn. We all think we know how to do it better.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And there's nothing worse than trying to fix a bad habit.
Yeah, yeah. It's, uh, it's hard to break it is what it is. And it just takes time, time and effort. So having a new one, having new shooters in here is nice. We do like it.
Right.
Because they're easy to mold, you know? And you get that little scare tactic and be like, hey, keep your finger off the trigger. You're gonna put a hole in the wall or in the floor or something. So.
Hey, for home defense, do you do a lot with shotguns? Do you have shotguns in the library?
We do. We have plenty of shotguns in here. We have Mossburgs, Remingtons, we have a Kel-Tec KSG. We had a whole shipment in a Benelli M4s now. So we are stocked on our shotguns.
How cool is that Kel-Tec KSG?
I love it. You know, Kel-Tec used to get a bad rap in the very beginning and now these new ones that came out. We have a Kel-Tec on our range and honestly, it's probably the most reliable gun we've had on there.
Yeah.
We've never had an issue with it. It's never jammed. It's just, it's a great gun and I love it.
Wow.
They had a bunch, they kinda earned their bad reputation, but man, they hit it out of the park with that KSG. That thing is awesome.
Well, it's just like the Pinto. They fixed it.
Yeah. Is that the one that exploded?
That's the one that exploded, right. All right, Casey. Casey, thank you very much for taking time out of your day. Glad you're feeling better and the pipes are working. So we will talk to you next week. Folks, that is The Gun Range San Diego. Check it out. www.thegunrangeSanDiego, right there on Balboa, 7853. Open seven days a week, 10 to 10. Go down there and check these guys out. Thanks a lot, Casey. Have a good evening.
You too, guys.
The answer. All right, folks. Welcome back. You are listening to Gun Sports Radio right here on FM 96.1 AM 1170. We are the answer. And right now, hey, do you or any of your family keep a taser? Maybe a pepper spray, firearm or other weapons for personal protection? Well, do you have or are you gonna get a CCW? Well, what would you do if you got involved in an incident where you were pulled over, ended up in jail? How are you gonna pay for the bail and, and a lawyer? Well, guess what? For $10 a month, that problem is solved. Firearms Legal Protection. Go to www.firearmslegal.com, firearmslegal.com. They could definitely hook you up. And normally when we have, uh, normally when we have our good buddy, uh, John Dillon in, you could get him as one of your lawyers, but not this case. He's off today. But you still could get him. So check these guys out. Firearmslegal.com, firearmslegal.com. All right, ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, we've got stump my nephew, Sam the gunman is on the line.
The one and only.
The one and only, the legend.
Sam, are you there?
Evening, gentlemen.
What's up, son?
I'm good. Uh, I actually went shooting today.
What'd you shoot?
Yeah, what'd you shoot?
A gun.
1911.
I've heard of it. I've heard of it.
Nice.
How'd you like it?
Uh, pretty good. My, uh, my groups are getting tighter and tighter as, as I get more practice.
I'm good.
Funny what practice will do, huh?
Yeah.
All right. So here, you ready? Ready for the question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This comes from Mara in San Diego. Mara wants to know, what is a Monte Carlo comb? She wants to know, what is a Monte Carlo comb when it comes to, um, firearms? Well, first, that's a great question. But first, uh, let, let's just start with, tell, do you know what a comb is?
Yeah, I do. It's, it's the top part of, um, a, a shoulder stock where you, where you put your cheek.
Yeah. Dave, Dave thinks it's that little plastic thing he keeps in his.
Well, that's what I thought it was.
Well, it's that too.
Okay. So the comb is exactly right. That's right. The comb is the, uh, top part of the, uh, of the stock. Usually, uh, most often they, they talk about, uh, uh, shotguns when they're talking about a comb, cause it's pretty important shotgun sports. But she wants to know, what is a Monte Carlo comb?
All right. Um, a Monte Carlo comb is, um, you, you see it on some, uh, some fancy wood stocks. It's, I, I don't really know a good way to describe it, but it's sort of like it sticks up where you put your cheek and then it, it drops off near the butt pad, I guess is the, is the best way I can explain it.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. So it's the, it's the, the, those stocks that you see where there's kinda that extra, it almost looks like an extra, like a wooden pillow sitting on top of your, uh, your, your stock, right? Wouldn't, isn't that kinda how you'd maybe, what, what do you think? What's it for? Do you know what? Why would they make a Monte Carlo comb?
Um, it, it gives you, um, a more secure cheek weld when you're, when you're using, um, sights or a scope or whatever.
That's exactly right.
Hey, we got another question. Fire away. We got it from Noah from Outer Space. He wants to know, and if, and if you stump this gentleman, you get a T-shirt. What? And you're gonna get this one. What is James Bond's most common firearm from all his movies?
All right. Noah from Outer Space. Thanks very much for sending in the question. Um, James Bond uses a Walther PPK. And, um, the reason he used that is because in the original books, in, in Ian Fleming's original books, um, he wanted James Bond to be using something that he thought a real life secret agent would be using. Um, and so he gave, he gave him a, a PPK, which is a very small, compact, concealable pistol. Um, and the original ones were chambered for 32 ACP, which at the time was a really, really common cartridge.
It, how, uh, how devastating is this weapon? This is just my question. I mean, is it?
Well, in 32, not all that, um, it, 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 it doesn't really have all that much terminal effect, but, um, James Bond has perfect shot placement. So of course he hits the vital organs every time.
I know. Uh, I, I, this, the cable system I'm on, they've been lately, they've just been running James Bond front to tail, you know? And, and yeah, and I've seen him with that. And dude, he can fire thousands and thousands and thousands of yards and hit things with that gun. So that's pretty cool.
Yeah. 32 is, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Sam, but most people consider a 32 the absolute minimum, uh, caliber for, uh, any kind of self-defense round.
What about a 25? What about a 25?
Or even a 22?
Well, I've heard people say, uh, I've heard people call 380 the, uh, the absolute minimum. It, it really, I guess it depends on, um, what kind of threats you're going to be going up against. But in my personal opinion, as someone who's never been involved in a shootout, um, 380 would, would probably be the absolute minimum. And you definitely wanna have some good reliably expanding hollow point loads.
Now, when are you gonna get involved in a shootout, Sam? Have you scheduled that yet or?
Yeah, let me know when you do.
My schedule's pretty packed through the end of the year. Uh, I think February is about the earliest I can fit one in.
Yeah, I don't wanna get shot by anything. You're asking about a 22. I don't wanna get shot by a 22.
No, 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 I don't either. But, but it's interest.
The whole point of, uh, of defensive carry is that you hope you never have to.
Right.
Use your, uh, your carry weapon.
Well, that's one of the neat things about a shotgun. All you gotta do is rack it. And whoever's on the other side of that door is usually gone if you open it.
The, the international language.
There's something about that, that nasty little tone back there. Hey, so what are the gun laws doing back in your hometown? Are you getting affected like we are in California?
Um, really? No, not that, um, no, pretty much not at all. This is, um, we're, we're on the east coast and we're, I'm in Virginia. So, uh, Virginia's a, a pretty firearm friendly state. Um, it's actually an open carry state, uh, though that's, of course, that's primarily for hunters, not for, um, you know, just guys walking around with a giant nickel plated 1911 on their hip, cause they didn't wanna get a permit.
Yeah. Permits are, it's a shall issue state. You guys don't have to provide good cause. You just go in.
It is a shall issue state.
Really? And what does that mean again? Cause we don't have that in California.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry about that, by the way. Uh, a, a shall issue state is a state, um, where I, I believe it's, um, most states are like this, where if you satisfy the requirements for a concealed carry permit, then they have to issue you the permit. In a, uh, a may issue state like California, um, it's kind of up to the discretion of some elected official, usually the, uh, the county sheriff.
Right.
So if you have a county sheriff who's very, um, very permitting and, um, wants lots of people to, to have CCW permits, then he will pretty much hand them out to anyone who satisfies the requirements, demonstrates that they have, um, you know, the skills and, and the safety training and all that stuff. Um, but in, in other counties, you'll get sheriffs who are, um, they, they kinda don't really want a lot of people carrying, so they, they will, um, set their own personal standards for who they should, who they think should and should not get a permit.
Got it.
So let's go back to the, the Monte Carlo, before we let you go, the Monte Carlo comb, uh, can you tell folks, I don't know if you, if, if, uh, know the answer to this or not, but why is it particularly, um, more important with a shotgun typically to get a consistent cheek weld? I mean, it's always important on any kind of rifle, um, but particularly with a shotgun, why is it, why is it extremely important to get a, uh, consistent cheek weld?
Um, well, I'm not really a shotgun guy, so this, this might be way out there, but, um, I would guess it has to do with, um, two things. First, that you're going to be swinging around the shotgun a lot more, um, because you're using it to, to take birds presumably or clay pigeons. Um, and also that shotguns generally only have one sight. They just have a little front sight bead. They don't have a notch and blade or a peep sight or anything. So you, you really have to use that, uh, that sort of sight rib along the top of the barrel to, um, to get a good sight picture.
You just nailed it. That's exactly right. Most rifles have a front and back sight, so you line up two points of reference. Shotgun, you get one point of reference, so you have to be looking at it the exact same.
That's right. And by the way, my co-host, uh, who just left, who's a, a practicing lawyer, he is right about the word shall. It is mandatory. It means that there is, is no discretion to deny. Which I have no idea what that sentence just made, but anyways, but you were right on the money. Boy, you're just hitting it out of the park. We're gonna have to start giving you something for all the ones you get right.
Uncle Mikey. We'll get him a T-shirt.
You haven't got him a T-shirt yet?
Yeah, you got a T-shirt. We gotta send him more stuff.
And I was gonna yell at you, cause you didn't bring my hat in, but you did bring a brat. No, 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 no arguing.
A Nooski's brat.
A Nooski's brat. You ever had one of them, Sam?
Say again?
A Nooski's brat? Have you ever had one of those? Oh, it's a hot dog.
Bratwurst. I don't think.
No.
Yeah.
You know, you probably don't eat them. You looked pretty healthy last time I seen a picture of you, but they are the most delicious things. Thanks to Laura. She was nice. And she even popped it in the microwave, heated it up. Anyway, so.
Well, Sam, you did an awesome job as always. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Not only answered your question, you answered a bunch of questions. Awesome job.
Yeah. And, uh, we look forward to seeing you at the gun prom.
Love to be there.
Uh, don't worry about it. We're gonna make it happen. Kinda heck or high water. And we're gonna make you stay long enough to come in and do, uh, do radio with us.
I hope so.
All right. We'll take care of it, buddy. All right. Folks, that's Sam the gunman. All you gotta do is try to stump him. Go to San Diego County Gun Owners dot com for questions and, uh.
And we'll make sure they get answered.
See if you can make them stand. All right, buddy.[1719.94]